Been pretty short, so.
So you've been making pretty good progress.
Yes, sir. Mark can provide more details, but I'll wait till after.
Gary, he couldn't be with us today. He had to go to appointment in Los Angeles, California, of all places.
You want to put Gary's nameplate on?
Yeah, yeah.
Get you a little coffee cup, too.
I'm a little bit nervous about being on this side of the table regardless.
It's an ordinary area.
I was wondering why you didn't bring your nameplate.
Yeah.
Sorry, because I knew you were going to take.
Yeah, yeah. It's not that bad. Okay, Mary, I'll get even with you.
I think we'll go ahead and get started with Next Era, the next on our agenda. Spencer and Mark share with Next Era. And you have any other people with you?
Yes, sir.
Just you two. Okay. So we'll wait for your presentation then.
All right. So we wanted to give our next update for the project. We are finishing our land acquisition in the county. We've received a very positive reception. A lot of landowners have signed on to participate with the project. So I'll go over the timeline in a second. Also, just want to show, based on what we've been able to sign landowners, what our project area looks like.
Yeah, request for you to speak up just a little louder.
Do you want me to get you to speak up?
Oh, yeah, actually, I might turn a little bit, too, if that's okay. Yeah, so we are finishing up our land acquisition right now, anticipating to be done by the end of the year. Received quite the positive feedback from a lot of the landowners. With that land acquisition nearing completion, we know what our project area looks like. So, Mark, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, I think.
No, I mean, that's where we're at. I think right now in the county, we're approaching the 70,000 acres or a little bit better signed, and then we're approaching 100,000 acres that is that are either to be signed or committed to.
So around 100,000 is the goal for the farm, per se?
Yeah, I mean, that's just where we're at. We've got some extra as far as that goes.
Now, is that in the original footprint of this, or is that outside the?
That would include some acres that fall outside of that footprint as well.
So we're dealing with both in and out?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Because the way I got it, in the footprint, you've got roughly 40,000 acres, something like that.
I didn't break it down to this step.
Yeah. Be closer to that footprint, for this footprint, and I'll share the screen with everyone after as well. So this is the footprint for the project. You can see we are setback from Corning and Goff, as well as Centralia. The entire footprint is within Nimaah County. We do not go outside Nimaah County for this project, so. Any questions on the locations? And again, I'm willing to show this to everyone after the presentation.
You signed an agreement back at the end of '16 for a footprint. Now the footprint changes. What now, per se, happens outside of that footprint?
That's something I can address with Brad.
Okay.
Based on the contribution agreement and the other agreements as well.
Okay.
So on that point, which is the next slide.
Is it okay if I can say something?
Please, sir.
Because I can see the map and everybody else can't. That's way larger outside of that original agreement area than the actual agreement area is. Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Go back to that.
Yeah.
Do you have the original also? We have a copy, Mary Kay, of the original, you know, boundaries, per se.
Right.
And I'm going to assume that's about three times larger than what the actual one would have been, per se, at that footprint. Just guessing.
I wouldn't say.
You got one, there it is. Of course, that's Jackson County at the bottom of there, which you've got that yellow. This would be across, like, radius. This would be counted right now.
Yep.
So that's Jackson County.
Right.
Okay. And if I turn that around, looking at the same, which I don't know, it goes clear up into here.
Right.
I mean.
So we did, some of that ground in Jackson County, we shifted it north.
Okay.
To include all of it within Nimaah County.
But is it included in this, even though you shifted it from the original thing we submitted to the government?
Yes.
So you're basically saying that anything that we had in this, you can shift that anywhere in Nimaah County and make it work?
That's our view, yes. Of course, that's something I would be discussing with Brad as well. See what the county's view would be as well. But that's our view, yes. So go to the next slide, are the agreements with the county. First being the contribution agreement, which would be an annual contribution from ourselves directly to the county. This has been done before on a dollar-per-megawatt basis, based on the size of the project. It can also take on other formats as well. This would be something that would be negotiated between ourselves and the county, you know, to fit the needs of both parties. The next item is the decommissioning bond that is put in place prior to the start of construction. As with the contribution agreement, you can do this in different ways. One way is a dollar figure per turbine that exists in the county. So it would cover the removal cost of the turbine and all the related equipment associated with the project.
So how much of a bond do you recommend? And what do you think, so much per tower?
This can range between 25,000 to 60,000 per turbine.
Per turbine. And then, really, because I thought they said it cost almost 200,000.
No, it doesn't.
Okay. But the, and you'll have a bond with Nimaah County on that part of it?
Yes.
Okay, now what happens if you don't pay the premium? Or don't pay to have the bond no more?
If we don't pay?
If it, you know, and the bond's only as good as if the premium paid.
Right, right.
You know, and if you went bankrupt or something, you wouldn't pay the premium.
Right.
Then what happens?
So with the strength of the bond, that's based on our credit rating as a company. So we're, we have a very high credit rating. We have public utilities. That's why, where the strength of our bond comes from. The final item, and we did meet with Dennis a little while back, our construction manager sat with him and kind of discussed how we deal with roads, the road use and maintenance agreement. This covers anything to do with the roads that are used, owned and maintained by the county. So anything from where we're hauling in heavy equipment or material, or we're hauling concrete and sand from within the county, all these items are covered under the agreement. In the same way, our survey that is done prior to construction, identifying areas that are needing to be upgraded to support the heavy loads, that will also be covered under this agreement. It's our obligation to upgrade and maintain those areas.
You say maintain, now what's that mean? For how long?
During construction, and then obviously after construction, the the rate of heavy loads kind of decreases a lot, right? But if there's any maintenance or anything that has been done during the operation of the wind farm requiring any major equipment, where we have to bring in heavy loads again, then we would, you know, do the necessary work to make sure the roads are.
So once the plan is completed, then it's going to be on the townships to maintain the road?
For.
To keep it.
For basic, for basic traffic. But any traffic that's due to our operation of the wind farm, that will be on us.
The roads that go back into the turbines, are you taking care of them then?
Yeah.
With your own grader?
Yes.
And you produce your own rock?
Yes. So next is going through our current timeline that we have. As mentioned before, we're nearing completion of our land acquisition phase. We're targeting the end of this year to be done with that. After that time, we will be going back to our landowners and negotiating with them on our Exhibit Bs, meaning the exact location of the turbines, the collection lines and the access roads, where those are on their ground, if they have seen any issues that we didn't foresee, or they want the access road to kind of curve around a certain piece of their property, that is the time that those items are negotiated. Now, at the same time, with those negotiations ongoing, we will be conducting our micro-sighting surveys. We'll have our engineering teams and environmental teams go out and walk the specific round where the turbines and access roads will be placed. That will, per the schedule now, be happening in January. And once we know where the turbines will be, we'll be able to produce our array, so the actual design of our wind farm, where the turbines will be. Knowing that, we can also produce our haul route, where we would like to haul in our equipment. With those two items, we'll be able to come to the county and negotiate the agreements that I mentioned before, because there's enough information present to have a productive conversation on what both parties want and need.
So you're thinking of beginning construction in June, then?
Yes. And before that, we'd like to have a job fair in March. Request I have for the county and the community, results of the job fair are often based on how many people come out and participate. So if you could please kind of help raise some awareness, we could help, you know, get the local participation numbers up. We're targeting 20% or better for local labor. Of course, that will vary on, you know, how many come to us and are able to offer assistance. At the same time, with the full-time employees for the site, we encourage anyone who's interested to please reach out to us as soon as possible, so we can get that conversation started as well. Because we're always looking for talent and especially local talent, so. Because these jobs will be here for quite some time, so someone who's already a part of the community is preferred.
That's for maintaining the turbines once they're put out.
Yeah, so we will, there will be a operations and maintenance building. And you'll have around 15 to 20 full-time employees working out of that office. Those will be, that'll be wind technicians, site managers, and also some office positions as well.
Can we print off that map you had before? Absolutely. I don't know, can you?
If you could email it to me or something?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I could print it.
I mean, can we do that now?
Yeah.
I'll email it on this card.
Just the separate word thing on the map?
Yeah.
Dad, even from where I'm sitting, I couldn't see where it goes. It just, it looks nothing like that map.
Does this look, this the same kind of map you have? Or do we have one that shows?
I believe that's all I have.
That's the only one we've got.
That's like what I have. And it's attached to that resolution.
Do you have that Wi-Fi?
Um, we don't have Wi-Fi here.
We want some.
You're in Jackson County down there, yeah?
Yeah, that sets the Jackson County line there, where those little jagged pieces go south. That's what, um, is it a trace?
No, a little bit more, isn't it?
Gone, gotta be a little bit more.
A little bit more, isn't it?
I didn't think of it that far.
Down.
75 highways on the, you can see.
For what?
No, no.
That's not Walker.
Yeah.
There you go. It is. Oh, there you go, isn't it?
We'll have Wi-Fi as soon as we get back to the office, we can send it.
Okay.
But, I mean, if people want to come up and.
They can see what that footprint looks like now, according to how you have it. Have you got a letter from? That's a letter I got the other day from the attorneys from Hyden Brothers for their fly airstrips. I'm assuming you overlapped into what they're thinking ought to be a no-tire zone for their airstrips.
Based on the current design now, yes. And Mark has been speaking with him as well.
Okay.
Kind of like, he's been taking the lead since he's a pilot himself, so I think that's a fair conversation.
And so that's a negotiation process between you and them? Or this is Nimaah County, or they're going to be on us?
Right now, this is strictly between ourselves and them.
But I haven't heard anything in a while.
In a while?
Well, and the thing we want you to be understanding is, is they're a pretty viable operation in Nimaah County. They've got 41 employees or more. It's pretty valuable to us.
And we did include a setback in our design?
I see that, but it's quite a bit smaller than this.
It is different than that, yes.
So I guess, you know, that there is a negotiation process, I'm assuming, for that, too.
Right. But a lot of this, I mean, that's on, you know, once we finish our land acquisition and we know exactly where we have agreements in place and where things can be moved, then we can proceed with any further conversation.
Another thing that I've been, but Lifestar, you know, coming into our hospitals, do they have to fly around your windmills? Do they have, you know, what's? Have you had any problems anywhere with that?
No, we haven't.
Have you got anything like this? Have you guys received anything like this, or are you aware of it?
We received it.
You have?
We did.
Okay.
So when can I expect to hear more about that? And what guarantees am I going to have that I'm going to have a viable runway yet? So what's that look like?
As I stated, once we finish our land acquisition and we know where our full available footprint is, and we're able to come to you, and we know where we can move things, then we'll be able to give you a more solid answer. We don't want to come to you now when we don't even know what our final turbine design will look like.
So I'd assume whether his, the priority of his airport and his fly zone, if that's subject to what room to have you work, that you have to work with, am I to assume that that's the case with my residence as well?
Meaning, I'm sorry, I don't think I.
In other words, if, if how close you put a tower to his airport is determined by what you have to work with, and if you don't have enough to work with, therefore you put a tower where he maybe doesn't want it, or it doesn't, or it puts his business at jeopardy, where does that, what does that mean for my home?
For your home?
Yes.
We have internal guidelines of 1,400 feet. So we have to be setback from a house by 1,400 feet.
And can that be negotiated further?
That can be, yes.
Yeah, because it.
As a pilot agreement, what I'm getting at is, as Nimaah County, can we come in and say, "We'd like to see you at least 2,500 feet from any resident that has not signed an agreement with you"? I'm just asking.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
If that could be a possibility.
Yes.
And then I look at that on the other side. Okay, the guy next door that did sign with you, I mean, he can put it wherever he wants. I mean, he wants to stay within 600 feet of this house, that's his business, because he's signed with you.
Right.
Your setback is 1,400 feet.
Right. But he could, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't build to that, right?
I guess to protect people that did not sign up, I would like to see that setback further for the ones that didn't sign up.
I'm going to throw an example in here, that Dwayne lives a half mile from my house. And if I decide I want to put a feedlot in at my place, or Dwayne decides he wants to put a feedlot in at his place, he has to have me sign off on that. And my mother-in-law, that lives a half a mile south of me, has to sign off on Dwayne's also. And she's almost, she's a mile from his house. So I don't think that certain setbacks are unreasonable. I don't have any problem with any leases. And I'm going to say this, and I'm having trouble saying it, because I've got customers in this room that I don't know what side of the fence it's standing on. They could, speaking out on this could cost me a lot. But I think everybody has a right to do with what they want to with their land. But there has to be something to protect the people that don't want that. And right now, what you guys have got is not acceptable, in my opinion.
What would you feel like would be acceptable?
I don't know.
Would 2,500 feet be acceptable?
In all honesty, Tim, I don't know. I don't know that anybody around here knows, and.
I mean, we're in the early stages, per se, of negotiations, okay? So my goal is to try to satisfy people. It's never going to be a perfect science.
And I think not only with the contribution agreement, but also we've done where we go back to all participating landowners who have signed a lease.
Participating landowners is that key word.
But in their lease says, "You must be setback so many feet from my neighbor." We've done that as well.
And.
So there's more than just that mechanism.
And what would that, that's just the normal 1,400 feet, though, right?
But that's, no, but that could be any distance that the landowner wants. Say, "Hey, can you please, you know, stay away from my neighbor by this distance"?
Neighbor versus neighbor is not as good a thing as me saying, "Okay, we need 2,500 feet", per se, just because they may not care about their neighbor. You know what I mean? So.
And there's some.
Currently, it's 500 feet from any property line before you're going to set one, right? You're not going to set it right on the fence line, because if it falls over and knocks the fence down, you're going to give at least, with the length of the tower, away from any property line.
Correct, right.
Okay? Then, because I had this posed to me, if I am signed up over here, not over here, got a house here, they can put one 500 feet from the fence right here, which they could.
Right.
I guess that's where I'm kind of trying to protect this person over here. It'd be nice if it was at least a 2,500 instead of 1,400. That'd be a half mile.
Right.
And maybe that's going to deter then the person that signed up not getting the tower. So see, there's a give and take here a little bit.
Absolutely.
Once we talked about the valuation of the land and the homes in and near, have you, do you have any information about our studies that indicate, like, if we put a house or put a windmill within 1,500 feet of Tim's house in five years, if he wants to sell it, how much is it going to be devalued over what it is worth right now? Because, you know, I have people that say, "Well, you know, you can't go outside and have a beer at night because you hear the whining and, you know, I don't."
We do, we actually, no, we do those studies. We have one recently done in Kansas for Ellsworth and Lincoln. So we do have that information.
And on the evaluations of the land?
Yeah, evaluations of the property.
Those studies were done by who?
That was done by an independent firm and out of, I think, I want to say Ellsworth, actually, is where they were. But that was involving the.
Shu and Hoffman Head.
Okay. If that was in Ellsworth and Lincoln.
And you know as well as I do, it's going to vary. From county to county, from town to town, because the more populated it is, the more it's going to vary.
Because that's correct.
The least populated it is, it's not going to make as much difference. So we know, I mean, that's common sense, in my opinion. It's not going to help you want to sell.
Right.
How much, we don't know. Even if you took that study from Ellsworth, it's going to change from here to there. So.
Tim, with regard to the setback conversation, it seems to me Europe has more history with wind farms than we do. And if you peruse around the internet a little bit, there are places in Europe that are talking about setbacks in terms of miles, one and two miles. And now, and I don't, I haven't researched it a great deal, but if they have more history, they're, therefore more time to assess this and consider all the ramification, both, and both pros and cons. And they're talking at least in areas of setbacks in the one and two-mile range. I'm not convinced that talking in terms of a quarter mile is where we need to be here, just because of the unknown.
Is the setback only 1,400 feet from houses? Or is it also, is there also a setback from non-participating landowners that don't want them anywhere near them?
It's from occupied homes.
So what's the setback off of landowners that don't want them anywhere near them?
Property boundary? Is that what you mean? That's 500 feet. And I think you talk about projects that have been in Europe. We've had projects in Kansas since 2001. So it's not necessarily something that's brand new to the state. Just for reference.
Is this the most populated area that you've decided to put it into?
No.
And Spencer, I'm Brad.
Yeah.
Okay, we've, I think when we discussed this issue previously, you said there had been instances where agreements will be reached with non-participating landowners?
Right, so that, that is, that's a participation agreement. So they sign on, you know, to participate in the project, even though they're not, you know, getting a turbine or collection. It's, you know, there's still some way they can be involved.
Okay.
How would it be determined who qualifies for such a participation?
That would be a discussion had with our land team. So Mark is the, our lead for Kansas. And so we need to discuss that for a minute.
So you're saying every windmill that you propose to put in this footprint right here will be in the property tax-free division for life?
That's our view, yes. And each year. And that would require the contribution agreement with the county.
With that.
Tim, can you share where that outer boundaries is on that? I still, I, it goes clear up north of.
A little bit north of 36 Highway? Most of it's from 36 South, if I'm looking at it right. That'd be 36 on the.
This is 36 up here.
Oh, okay, okay. We're several miles south of there then.
It looked like almost Kelly. Stringtown Road, didn't it? I was going to say, some of it goes up into Stringtown Road out there by Danny Henry's. And then they.
How much you have around Goff and Corning there? I mean, is that a mile square, per se, around each city?
Two miles.
Is it about two miles?
Can I pass it around?
Can I pass it around? No, I mean, I'm, like I said, as soon as I get back, I'll print this out and hand it. I mean, anybody that wants to come up and see is more than welcome. No, I mean, I'm, like I said, as soon as I get back, I'll print this out and hand it, I mean, anybody that wants to come up and see is more than welcome.
How many total turbines are projected in this project?
About a hundred and twenty?
They're gonna be two, three, five megawatts, per se, is that the goal?
Most likely, yes, most likely.
Will they all be the same?
No.
They ne, not necessarily will be.
Sometimes they vary just based on what's the optimized design.
Some could be three?
No, no, no.
No, no.
Not, not to the sizing, uh.
That's what I mean.
Two-five to two-seven, apply for this year, for that, the year.
So, can they take a picture of that with their phone?
Yeah, of course, no, please do.
Go ahead.
Mary Kay, once you receive this, can you print off copies for anybody who wants to come up and.
Again, they, they were trying to email it to me, but since we don't have Wi-Fi.
But later, after, yeah.
Yeah, I can sure.
And so, these would be available, I mean, I could.
Or we could.
Put it on the front page of the Courier.
Yeah, all you have to do is get ahold of us, and we will forward it to you, anyone that's interested.
Cuz in my, in my opinion, that doesn't even remotely look to what, look like what you guys agreed upon
in twenty sixteen.
in twenty sixteen. It, I mean, it covers some of the same footprint, but it expands way beyond it.
Yeah, it comes over here and goes up.
The north end of that is ten miles south of Stringtown Road, eight miles south of Stringtown Road.
Dennis and Tim, I have a question, when, the last time Spencer and Mark were here, Gary, you're sending any, remember this, Spencer, you do an X inside the red line, and said a turbine in here will be lifetime forgiveness, and then you're in X just outside of that, and as I recall, your response was that would be a ten-year property tax abatement.
Yeah, but he also said he needed to refer to his attorneys to make sure.
Right, so is that what you're referencing that?
I think that was also a reference to if we rebuild, um, another project, or try, or attempt to expand. If I recall correctly, I think that's what they're talking about.
I've got, I'll just look back, I got it recorded, I can see.
So, will this footprint change?
Will the footprint change? I mean. If it did, I mean, we're talking very, very slightly.
So, we're not.
Right, in the final.
It's not final.
Right, and when I say the final, Ray, and, you know, when, when we come to the point of, you know, bringing an agreement forth, that'll, it won't look like a, it won't be like this, where it's just a, a shape, you'll actually see the turbine locations as well as the areas where we can't build due to our setbacks, and it'll look more like that, it won't be just a kind of ambiguous shape, it'll show exact, um, locations.
How far north is that? How far north?
Stringtown Road.
A rough, yeah, that's what it looks like.
Jay's, just south of the lake, across.
North.
Or north of the lake.
Just north of the lake.
Hundred and twentieth.
Hundred and twentieth road, all the way across there, part of it, and then there's an area cut out up along sixty-three highway.
I have another tip to follow, and Mark, we talked about this on the phone the other day, the eight point eight says that, um, operators shall not install any turbines on owner's property within fourteen hundred feet of owner's residence, and my question for Mark, what, you just said it was anybody's residence, but that's not what this says.
Okay, well, that's, well, that's what it says in the agreement, but that was what I mentioned earlier, is that we can add language to the agreements. When we go back in January to add.
But everybody that's currently signed up is limited to just their own property, their own residence.
Right.
For the protection, is that right?
Right, but we, but we, but in our design, we don't put anything any closer than fourteen hundred feet, doesn't matter whether you are participating or not. And my point was earlier, when we have to go back in January to execute Exhibit B with the landowner, we can add language saying fourteen hundred feet from the owner's property, fourteen hundred feet from neighbor's property. You know, that can be added to the agreement as well.
To the, to the pilot agreement, or to the, what agreement?
I'm, I'm speaking to the, this agreement, this, or Windows.
So, two existing agreements that are already signed?
So, before they're signed, we have to go back and execute Exhibit B, and that's the exhibit that includes a turbine location in the realm. So, when we go back and renegotiate that, we can also add the language.
So, they're, are you saying that these agreements that are currently signed but not fully executed, or what are we, are we talking?
They don't have the, they're signed, they don't have the exhibit.
Tim, is there currently a, a county, uh, law with regard to setbacks?
Do we have none?
None?
None.
Have you ever had any?
Yes.
What was that?
Three thousand feet from any residence, and I think two or twenty-five hundred from any property line, if I remember right.
Fifteen hundred.
There's a fifteen hundred back then, and we have that agreement somewhere here, but anyway.
And that was.
We rescinded that in twenty sixteen.
For what reason?
Why?
I can explain that, uh, they, they passed it one time, that they requested some landowners for the previous project, the landowners requested it, the wind farm project did not send a representative, since, since there was no objection, it was passed, but at the time, I think we all knew that push come to shove, um, if they were ever challenged in court, they would be defeated. The county can only impose setback requirements for anything if the county is zoned. Without there being zoning and a comprehensive plan, we don't have the statutory authority to impose setback requirements.
So, how many landowners requested that, they rescinded?
Um. I don't know.
Well, I never heard anything about it, and I wouldn't have requested that.
Yeah, this was the northern project, there was a public hearing that was scheduled, and, and the only, only those who appeared, I think, were, I don't think there's anybody in support of the project, I think everybody was.
Who, who would have that had to stand up in court to?
Who would, who would have had to stand up in court to?
Yes.
If a wind farm project had come into Nima County and attempted to establish a project, and if they, uh, challenged our setback requirements, then, uh, they would have been successful.
You mentioned that, that the energy company did not send a representative to that meeting?
Yes.
What energy company are you referring to?
I don't remember the company that was up there.
UV, was it, was it UV?
They changed their, they changed their name, probably.
I don't know, they changed it about three times within a year.
They changed, we didn't know who the representative was at the time.
But there were two people present at one of their meetings when we were discussing that.
Yes, but that was earlier, then they came about two weeks later, wondering why we did what we did, and they said, you, well, I just told them, you don't have enough gumption to be at our meeting when we got a public hearing, you don't deserve anything in this county.
The meeting where we discussed the setback requirements, they did not appear, and frankly, we didn't know who to contact at the time.
Huh, I can understand that one.
Yeah.
So, back to the twenty sixteen action.
Yes.
Can you?
Clear back in twenty twelve, though, is when we put the setback.
But the twenty sixteen meeting, um, the dialogue there, cuz I wasn't there, can you remember some of that? As to why twenty twelve had to be repealed, yeah.
There was another project that, and I'm not sure if it was yours, or another project that was looking at coming into Nima County, I believe it was yours, it was in the southern part of the county, and there was the request made that we rescind those, and because I advised the board that indeed those, those setback requirements would not stand up in court, um, unless they wanted to go forth and zone the entire county, and they did rescind them.
But we had no public hearing on that?
Yes.
There was a public hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
It was, there was no attendance, though, right?
No.
Or very little.
Correct.
What was there, what was there for notice on that publicly, public hearing?
There was an article there in the Courier, as required, and the legal notice was there. Brad, is there, can you give us a statute that the, cuz I thought under Home Rule, our county commissioners could do things to protect at a local level?
We can, but, and I can't give you the actual statute, but what it says is, is to impose setback requirements, there must first be a comprehensive plan, and they must fit into the comprehensive plan, to, to give it to you off the top of my head, I could not.
I don't, I mean, you have to, and now, would you mind?
Sure.
At some point, let me know what that is.
Sure, and, and, and even without a specific statute, it's pretty common knowledge that to impose setback requirements, or any other sort of zoning restrictions, you actually have to have zoning regulations to begin with. Then there's a whole statutory method set forth, it's in KSA twelve, seven, forty-two, something like that, that you have, the whole procedure that has to be followed, first by appointing a planning commission, setting forth a budget for that commission to study it, and then you have to have a carrying set forth zoning regulations, I remember looking at Shawnee County zoning regulations, and they're a hundred and seventy-seven pages long, so it's, it's a, it's a huge undertaking.
The wind farm's a huge undertaking.
It is.
So, you did not make a decision regarding. So, does Jackson County have zoning resolution?
I don't know. I don't.
They do.
Jackson, Jackson County, they have a lot of rule development, so they might be zoned, I don't know. Jefferson County is zoned, Jackson County is, I don't believe Marshall County is, Brown County's not.
You guys can probably answer that more easily, that, is that the reason that the fingers that went down into Jackson County have been moved up into Nima County? Most likely?
No.
Do you know whether or not Jackson County's zoned?
How do you know that, that that's not the reason?
Cuz it got moved north because of wind resource.
Wouldn't that stop the county line?
Uh, looking back at our minutes, in two thousand and eighteen, uh, December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, there were eighteen people present at that, at that open meeting for the, and, and they was all there, came into the board for the public hearing to consider possible construction and operation of a wind power project in Nima County. So, they was wanting a wind power project, but in order to do that, we had this resolution, two thousand and twelve dash eight, and we had to rescind that to allow that, and that's when Brad, we had a later visit, and, and it came up, and we rescinded that to allow, um, them to move forth, and part of their argument was, and, you know, the farmers or the people that own the land feel like that we should not have control over what they do on their land, and the only way to get away from that is zoning, and I don't think many people wanna go to zoning. I, I mean, there's so many other things involved with zoning a county, other than just this. Granted, it's a way to control this, but there's a lot of things gonna happen that you don't like, you know, you can't just build a lean-to under your barn, you can't, you know, you can't do anything at your place without permission and paying a permit, and, and all the things that go on, and, and that all is gonna cost, either have to get you a lawyer to, to draw things up, you'll have to get an engineer, you know, to build a building, you know, there's just a lot of things that gets involved when you get into that, so, but that is the day we did that, and there was eighteen people here in support of that, uh, rescinding that resolution.
Mark, you have anything?
We have a question. It has something to do with this, but what's it do to the valuation of your county? Uh, I'm talking, I really don't have a, I don't own any land, I own a lot and a half in a town, so you're certainly not gonna put a title on mine. But, my question is, what does it do to the taxes of everybody that's out here? And, and when I say what's it gonna do, I need to know what's the valuation, and then, because of the way schools operate, I'm talking schools, okay, I'm sure there's other entities, but the way schools operate, if your assessed valuation goes to a certain level, you, you lose the opportunity for state aid, there are some of the districts that have lost, already dropped in state aid because pipelines have gone through, valuations have gone up, uh, all that kinda stuff, so, and in, in the end, it affects every landowner, homeowner, business owner, anybody that's paying taxes are gonna pay more taxes cuz they gotta make up that. Let's say you get twenty-five percent state aid for your bond issue, you lose that twenty-five percent, somebody's gonna make that twenty-five percent up, and it's taxpayers. That, it has to, that's the only way you can do it, cuz you gotta pay the base bond payments, and you gotta raise the taxes to do that. How does that affect us? Are, are, will it go like when the pipelines went through, and everything jumped by four million dollars on your assessed valuation that, that first year? Has, has anybody even thought about that? Cuz I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm a, I'm retired, I'm not in the schools anymore, but I do know how it affects them, and, and I know how it's gonna affect every one of these landowners, these guys out here that have a lot of land, it's gonna, it's gonna, if we lose twenty-five percent in that district, and you got land in three districts, and they all lose it, which, I don't know, I'm sure some, some may have land in three different districts, there's only three districts left in the county, but, but if you've got land there, it's gonna affect you, and it's gonna affect you in a big way, where everybody says they're not doing it. My second question, I guess, or statement was, if that, if the schools lose that money, what's, what's planned to help make that up? Is there any kinda taxes, I mean, when the taxes go up, do we get to help some of that makeup? Is it gonna be, um, the commissioners, have you decided that you're gonna give a certain percentage, or whatever you all get out? I don't know what the benefits of this is, I, I really don't, but, by doing, having this in here, but is there some way that that money's gonna be? I know there's a, something called a pilot program, and all this kinda stuff.
There is, in this pilot agreement, and they would make a contribution to Nima County, and the way I understood it, and I've not found a statute, and I don't think Brad has, that says, as far as they're concerned, it's in our general budget. Now, how we divide it up is probably gonna be amongst us, unless Nextera wants to put it in their contract with the pilot agreement, that it will be split out per tax unity.
And actually, and actually, I think Nextera would not be part of the contribution here, but if it was gonna be, it'd be up to the commissioners to determine how it trickles down, if at all, but Nextera does have the option of entering into separate agreements with school districts.
Right.
Yeah.
So, then, as it stands right now, the only, only idea that's out there is, in a, let's just take a school district, for example, they'll make it up through taxes to the, because there's no plan, what I'm hearing you say, there's no plan at this point, there may be, but there's none at this point, to dispense any of those dollars to any of the districts in the county. So, therefore, if you lose your twenty-five or thirty percent, whatever it is, state aid, then you're gonna make it up through taxes to your constituents.
But how are we losing the twenty-five percent in this, on this particular deal?
Thirty-sixty million dollars of added valuation?
Yeah, it, it, it's based on when you're set, your.
So, that's gonna affect, the sixty, cuz whether their tax. Say this project's a four hundred mil, I don't know what this project's gonna be, will it be four hundred million dollars?
Roughly.
So, say it's four hundred million dollars, that's gonna get thrown on and be counted against the school districts, even though they don't get anything from it? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
That's correct.
Cuz the number's based on value, overall valuation, and whether they're, whether they have a tax abatement or not, it's part of the county's valuation.
Would, would, and this would count towards the valuation?
I'm sure it does, I'm, I think we went through that with.
I know we discussed with Betty, yeah.
And I'm sure that that was my understanding, that it does go on now.
I know she has to assign a value.
It goes on.
Ifrazal's value, yeah.
Yes, so it goes on evaluations, and so, if ours, if our district, ours, one, whatever it is, one fourteen, one fifteen, one thirteen district, if that evaluation increases, the state has a formula that they work from, and if you get to a certain point, now you start going the other direction on, on your, uh, state aid for bond issues and, uh, capital outlay, and some other.
I think that's what.
Right now, we're a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars, so all of a sudden, we go to five hundred and sixty-eight million dollars, and that, you're prob, if that's the case, you're gonna be right.
That's.
And it would probably be up to the school districts, cuz they have the expertise, they have the people they work with to let the county know what impact that would have, I'm guessing. I'm guessing.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Well, if, if, if indeed the excess valuation is going to have an impact on aid received by the schools, we'd probably need the school district's assistance to, to figure out exactly what that would be, I'm guessing.
Oh, it'll be big, I can tell you.
Which, I don't know if that'd be a total.
Well, I'm pretty sure, and I wish, I wish I could talk to him again, but.
That's something.
I'm very certain that they've, because of pipelines and pumping stations and those kinds of things, their valuation jumped pretty good size, and, and that took their state aid down to almost zero, if, if it's not zero, I, I'm not sure on that, you'd have to check with them, but I do know it will have an effect. If you lose your state aid, because your assessed valuation goes too high, and you lose your state aid, even if it's five mills, it affects the farmers, it affects every landowner, it affects every homeowner, it'll affect everybody.
Terry's got his pink envelope, they've been hitting us pretty good already.
Your newfound wind turbine payment doesn't offset your newfound tax bill then?
Yes, they are collecting, but if you don't get any taxes off it, you have no way to make that up.
We don't know.
Yeah.
So they are.
Well, I, this is all a lot over my head, but I called Richardson County this morning because we have wind turbines in Richardson County, so I wanted to know how much Richardson County receives from the flat water wind turbines, and last year they received two hundred and eleven, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So I asked them how they prorate, you know, where that money goes, and they said, that money comes in and it goes out exactly how I pay taxes in Richardson County, Plan eighty, so it's already put up, how much goes to colleges, how much goes to the fire district, it's already out, and so Richardson County knows that they are getting, last year got that two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, so those schools and those places know how much money they're coming in.
By township.
By township. So are you saying, telling me that we're not gonna be getting that much taxes? I, I don't know.
We have no idea.
See, they knew ahead.
That, well, see, and that's the other thing that can be put into our, uh, our annual contribution agreement, is that NextEra could request that we follow, or we could put it in there, and that way, it's not up to the three commissioners to decide how it's gonna be split.
And they.
Uh, you know, and the other thing on this, you know, you get your, I think it's Anderson County, it's down around Ottawa, somewhere down in there, but they had a huge electrical thing go through, a huge electrical thing, and they got like two hundred million dollars, and they started getting taxes on it and all this, and their schools going to hell, straight in the handbags. The same thing you was talking about, well, then all of a sudden they got a wind farm come in, and they paid them something like three hundred and some thousand dollars, and they just, they just rolled that over to the school districts in the county. They said, no, we don't want anything to do with it to make up for, and that is, so I, I'm pretty sure.
But that's my point, if there's no provisions for something like that to happen, and, and you're not thinking about that kind of thing, it could sneak up on you and slap you in the head pretty quick. I can tell you that there's four wells, or not wells, four windmills and one thirteen up here, and I know one thirteen's not getting a dime for them, and there's a ton of them over in Marshall County.
Marshall County with the century.
And they're not getting anything. I think, uh, I'm not sure, I think there's a bunch in Centrales.
Even their valuation.
Are there any in Vermillions?
Most of them would be north far enough, it'd probably be Aix or Mary's.
I know there's a bunch out there at the Lady Johnson, but that's all in Mary's River.
Probably.
But I know, I, because I've contacted both of those school districts, they're not getting anything.
Conversation well needed, because, you know, like I said, all this information is good, uh, because the last thing we want to do is get blindsided, and that's why, you know, we have been encouraged as much support and, and information from our constituents as we can get, so that we absolutely got a good basis to make a decision, because no matter what, and I, you've been on the other side of the desk often enough, that sometimes when you get over here, you get overwhelmed, and a lot of these things is just overlooked. I mean, I, I, pure and simple, I mean, it can happen to anybody.
Dennis, the, the payment in lieu of taxes, is that a ongoing, or what's the term for that? Is that a one-time upfront deal, or is it?
No, it'll be yearly.
Because it, can it, can it be extended for the life of the turbines? Because if, if these are a lifetime tax exempt, whatever you guys negotiate is all we're gonna see as a community out of this for the lifetime of it, which, maybe it's only ten years.
We've got some information where counties have done forty years, fifty years.
I mean, I mean, one advantage we have is, is we're not the first ones in Kansas to, to have this happen, so Gable's been great about getting information from other counties, and we can learn from what other counties have done right and what other counties have done wrong.
And are you guys getting with the, with the KAC? My, my wife deals with you guys, and she, one of the things she said to me is, she said, they need to go to the KAC because they can talk to the other commissioners that have dealt with this and see what the pitfalls were.
And that's what, we just had our, our commission meeting in Kansas City, and that's where I've talked to several, and some have good feelings, some have bad, so, you know, it's, it's both, and a lot of it depends on, on the company, you know, uh, I will say, the people I've talked to that had NextEra was, was pretty, pretty well, said things are good, but there's a couple of companies out there that they said, you better watch out for, you know. So when will this decommissioning bond be funded, or how do we, how do we, as county commissioners, ensure? Still not got that in my head completely, how we're gonna convince, we're gonna convince any of these farmers to go ahead and sign, because the decommissioning agreement is in play.
Well, so those three agreements, usually the way we like to do is, we negotiate them at the same time, because they all kind of play into each other, and you have the same conversation where concerns are, you know, heard and every, items are addressed, right?
Yeah, and, and the conditional use permit requires to proceed forward with that, that we have these agreements in place, so Spencer's is exactly right.
Right.
What I agree with, though, it costs at least a quarter of a million dollars to get one of them down.
I, I mean, I'm just.
I did a little research as we were just sitting here.
You may get a hundred thousand dollars for scrap, so that would come off, for say, but twenty-five years from now, thirty years from now, what will it cost to decommission? That's the problem I see down the road. Will it be five hundred thousand, will it be three hundred thousand? If you got a bond for sixty thousand, that's a drop in the bucket. So, I mean, this is part of the, the negotiation part, we need to be on top too, because I don't want the farmers, twenty-five years from now, they get all the, they get their payments, and then it costs them more to decommission than what they go for payments. I mean, that's.
If they want them down. See, otherwise, we could down.
Yard art, I don't know if any of them want that for yard art.
And they got miles and miles of oil wells that are yard art.
Yeah, but Dennis, you don't have to maintain FAA required lighting on an oil well.
Yeah, that's true. Uh, but in your wonderful crystal ball, what is your plan for this wind farm twenty-five, thirty years down the road? I mean, will you be replacing, what is the lifetime of your windmills? What's, when will you replace them? Are you planning on replacing them, or would they phase out?
So the plan would be to upgrade them, so with our agreements with the landowner, payment is based on a dollar per megawatt basis, so we would go in and upgrade them, so each turbine would be able to produce more energy, and then the payments would increase as well. That's our strategy. When you put the turbines up, technology improves, you can replace the generator itself, you know, blades get better, that's our plan, that's our strategy.
The plan is to keep the windmills functioning for a hundred and fifty years.
Upgrade them.
Upgrade them and keep them in place and, and everything going, and that's assuming that your company don't get bought out in that.
You know, one of the things that I found in some of my pea-brained, pea-brained research, there are some things that, that can be done with these wind turbines to kind of reduce the amount of impact on people around, like, I guess FAA's approved radar, radar-controlled lighting on them, to where the lights at, at night aren't on all the time unless the radar's telling it it needs to be. Um, one of the companies has got a deal that if, uh, that the flicker effect that's caused by the turbines, they can actually control that, where the system knows that, hey, this house is within this footprint, the lights, the sun's in the right position, and it can automatically shut that down. Are there things of that nature, if they are gonna come in and we are gonna have to deal with them, can, can requirements that those type of features be placed on these turbines as a part of that pilot agreement?
So I have a couple of questions, like, Tim, you just touched on, and this is, one concern for me, you touched on decommissioning costs upwards of two hundred and fifty thousand, I think Dennis, you mentioned two hundred thousand, Spencer, is that right? You talked about fifty, sixty thousand, so where do those, where do your numbers come from? Is that a, do you have, do you have data to show?
We do.
Could you publicize that?
Well, the thing is, Dwayne, that, see, they would decommission, if they would bring their own equipment in, you know, and, and how they value that compared, if it was just you, you can just about imagine how much trouble it'd be for you to get somebody a crane and somebody to come out there on your farm and take one of them down, just for the one windmill.
It would probably be a little bit of trouble.
Yeah, and that's why I think there's such a difference in that variance.
Another, another thing, I, and I'm not sure if I understood that right correctly before, did, uh, you were talking about, uh, road and bridge improvements and maintenance? Did, did I understand that correctly? Does that come out of this pilot agreement?
That's a, that's a, its own standalone agreement, that's.
Okay. There will be a engineering firm that comes out after we determine the roads we're gonna be using, they go out and they completely, how do you want to say it, survey everything on those roads.
And then they hold us accountable as well, so they act on behalf of the county, it's kind of an agent, I would say, to hold us accountable.
Pennsylvania Avenue up here, we got a brand new bridge put on for the flat water project because they couldn't cross the bridge, it was there, they paid for it. That'd be some of the things that'll have to be.
And then the engineering firm would report to the county, you know, if, as we're building and using the roads, they would monitor us, make sure we're following the hall route, and anything that we, you know, damage on the roads, we're repairing and maintaining.
That was a question brought up too here in the past, that some projects, for say, both sides of the road are not leased, you need to get those cables to your substation, they're going right down the middle of the road and plowing them in, would that be something this NextEra would do without consulting with township, county, whatever, hey, we're gonna plow this in right down the road just because we don't have the permission on either side of the, no?
No, that's no, we didn't have permission. People never heard of it.
Yeah, we'd have to have, we could do that, but I mean, we'd have to have you ask for right away.
Right, yeah, there's, yeah, we would never, we could.
I'm just curious, I mean, here's some of these horror stories, and it could just be stories, I mean, you know, but.
I hope that's not the case, but.
I'm one of those that wanna cross every T and dot, every I, and.
Well, that's where the, the engineering firm would come in, that's the type of thing that they would make sure not have right.
Exactly. Because when these towers are going up, the cables are going in, is that true? All come at the same time? Just not the tires go up and then the cables go in? It's all kind of a, a hand-in-hand thing?
Yes.
Okay, and on roads on your approved route, let's say you got two miles of dirt road now, and you rock it, take care of it, get it, get it to where it is, and then after everything's complete, then they turn that over to the township for maintenance, and they'd have to furnish rock for that mile and a half or two miles or whatever it is.
If it's something that we went in and built?
Yeah, but in other words, if you take a dirt road and you put rock on it now to get it ready.
Right.
And get it into your windmills.
Okay.
And then, once you leave, you said then it's up to the, to us to take care of the roads, would the township then be responsible for putting more rock on the road when it's needed or whatever?
I see what you're saying, if you built a road, for say, right now it's dirt, change it over to rock.
Right.
Because you need it rocked. I would say, no, they need to keep it up because they're the ones that built the road.
Yeah, if we made any improvements like that, that required maintenance because of the improvements.
And that would be part of our road agreement, for say.
Then we would have to maintain it, yeah. Sorry, I didn't understand.
So we'll have a contact with somebody to do that.
Right.
Down the road, five years.
Because some of the townships are very, very worried about some of that kind of stuff, they don't have a budget to handle it now, let alone.
Well, they're very similar to, to Mr. Sholub, but, you know, they're gonna get, they're gonna get a lot of added expense.
Yep.
Could, no money. The only way they'll get money is, is to increase the taxes in their township, well, that ain't gonna, probably, you know, why should they have to pay more?
Kind of part of our road and bridge agreement, for say.
Right, yeah, and I didn't understand what you were saying at first, no, if it was an improvement on that dirt, we're adding rock gravel, then we would have to maintain it for.
So our road agreement, for say, will be the life of the towers, for say.
Yes.
I mean, because there still has to be some language in there, because someday you may be bringing cranes back in again, because you're redoing the, uh, the top section of the.
Right.
So all this heavy equipment may be coming back in, for say, someday.
I mean, some of it will come back, absolutely.
Well, okay, and then on, you know, we talked once about, we're gonna have to have somebody to help us with your road, your agreement, get some engineering company in board, uh, do you have suggestions, or do you have anyone that, does it make any difference who we get, or, uh, and then there, the guys we've talked to, we've talked to a couple of them, and they're both talking two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars for this deal for a year, to figure out what roads, what is all in, to me, most of that is your.
All of it is our expense, actually.
You'll take that expense, even though they wanna work for us?
Even though they're working for you, that's our expense.
Now, they all wanted to work for us.
Right.
For some reason, I don't know why, but.
But they also all represented, you paid for it too, so it's.
Right, well, yeah, and I think it, it protects the county award, if they are working for you, they're, you're, they're, you're a contractor, right, that kind of protects the county, protects them, protects the residents. Uh, we've used Kirk and Michael before, we're actually using them right now in Pratt.
Yeah.
Um, we've done it both ways, we'll leave it up to the county, where either the county will invoice us, or the engineering firm will invoice us correctly.
With that other company, do you know?
But either way.
Cook, Flat.
Cook and Flat.
Either way, they work, they work for the county, they're, they're protecting.
They're a local.
This they is, is the engineering firm already bringing it.
I'm sorry?
This they is the engineering firm, and so, so you hire them and they work for the county?
No, we actually hire them.
The county will hire them.
Who, who, who seek, who's something up?
They came to us. We have Cook, Flat, and Strobel, which we have somebody lives in Neimahaw County that works for them, and they heard about this, they came to us, and then Kirk and Michael, I don't, they heard about us through the grapevine, I guess, too, they came wanting to provide their services too.
Tim, Dennis, on the decommissioning, the other option to a bond would be an escrow, then you've got the money, the money's there, you could replenish it every five years or whatever it needed to be to keep up with current costs, that, your concern's about is the bond gonna be paid on time and premiums, so the escrow's another option.
Okay.
Mark, did you have a chance to confirm when I talked to you the other day on the phone about the, your megawatts in your, NextEra Energy Resources, was it, is it fourteen thousand about wind and two thousand solar? That's what your website says, is that correct?
So I passed the, the question on, I didn't get a specific answer, but it's pretty close.
Pretty close enough to.
Yeah.
They got the horse farm owners out, man.
How many jobs again did you guys say were gonna be created locally?
During construction.
Not, not, I mean, just.
Full-time.
After construction, because we had the pipelines roll through, and it was a boom for a lot of businesses, and then it was nothing.
So it tipped my tongue.
But, I mean, full-time, after, after things are up and going, I mean, truly local jobs, not, not crews coming through the service work, but truly local jobs.
Fifteen to twenty, wind techs, site manager, sometime, a project this size, or might be maybe two site managers, and then, you know, an office position or so, just to overlook everything. There will be an O and M building, a single building where we'll have our offices, that's where they will be working out of.
So roughly twenty employees, fifteen to twenty employees, so.
I would know what to put in.
So almost one for every five or six turbines?
And roughly, I wanna say, average salary around fifty-five-ish, plus some full benefits, on the job training.
Now, do you ever have anybody put any stipulations in, in these pilot agreements that, that it's this much more if these jobs aren't actually created?
I, I haven't, I can't say that I've encountered that.
Because I know a lot of times, and I've dealt with, with. Because I know a lot of times, and I've dealt with, with one situation where with the tax abatement. That was, you know, given granted on the fact that this company is going to create this many jobs and they had certain benchmarks that they had to hit. And if those jobs weren't created, there were penalties involved. So in other words, if, if you're saying that you're going to create a minimum of fifteen jobs. If you don't reach that benchmark, you have to provide that much additional in this, this pilot agreement.
I haven't encountered that personally, but.
I haven't seen that in any of the agreements I've reviewed.
Which, that's okay. That's a good point, though. I mean, because the normal business in Niemaha County has to keep that number up here or they lose out their benefits. So, good point.
Yeah.
You know, like, wherever I saw some of these companies, you know, they, they have, say, forty employees, they add ten. They have to keep that ten more or they lose out on the tax abatement and that ten year process.
Okay, very good conversation.
Yes.
We're running, but that's fine. We're welcome to stay here.
Do we got any other questions?
You know, if we got anything, but do we have any other questions that anyone wants to address while we have Spencer and Mark here?
One more. I got one more. Why can't, on Heinem Brothers' deal, why can't, when you know they've got this runway and you know they operate out of this and they obviously already employ quite a few people in the county. Why can't you just go ahead and tell them that, no, we will not build within this perimeter? Duane kind of asked that question earlier, but he kind of related it more to homes. But I, I don't, I don't understand why that you can't just have already told them that, hey, we're going to stay out of this area.
Wouldn't that be a negotiation process?
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't you feel like that's a negotiation between you and them though, kind of? Or do you feel like that should be at the county level? I, I don't know, I'm asking.
I want some protection, these guys are from Florida, I don't know, I don't know what they're going to do. So, yeah, that's, that's my angst.
And really, what's, I don't know how the county would be in a position to negotiate that.
Yeah.
But it is affecting Niemaha County.
But that would be a zoning issue, and when we're not zoned.
Yeah.
That would some, that'd be something between the private party to negotiate.
So the reason I, I put it that way, Darren, was because if, if, as I see it, and I'm not sure if this is an accurate assessment. But if, if Glenn is having difficulty getting to the point where he feels comfortable with his business. That doesn't give me much hope for my house, is. And that.
What would you feel like, well, and maybe this is not a proper question, but what would your, yes?
I don't know, I don't know enough about it, but.
And right now it's fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred?
Here's, here's, here's what I do know, that the more I read, the more concerns I have. Because this is not, it's not black and white.
And right now it's not fourteen hundred, that's what they are saying verbally, but in, and I haven't seen one of these contracts for six years. But in that contract, nothing verbal matters. So, and in their contract as it sits right now, from my understanding, is the setback is only fourteen hundred foot from the leasing landowner's home. And so what you're telling me is if a neighbor across the road leases his ground, they can put one five hundred feet across. On the other side of the fence, which is only seven hundred feet from my home.
Well, their setback is still fourteen hundred.
But that's, but that is not in writing. That is not in writing in your contracts. That is your verbal, verbal.
And right now.
Which is not valid according to your contract.
But right now, because we haven't gotten to the point where we are negotiating a contract with the county, so there hasn't been a way to include that language yet.
Put some stipulations in there.
But I agree, anything is spoken, it, it has to be in writing, I do fully understand. The only agreements that we have negotiated and executed now are with our participating landowners. So there hasn't been the opportunity for the county to become involved where that type of thing would be written down.
For say, we would be kind of representing the non-participants, so that'd be fair to say?
I think.
I mean, in the pilot, for say, of the pilot agreement, I'm just asking.
Your job is to represent everybody.
I think, exactly.
Your, your job is to represent us whether.
But they are taking care of themselves by signing their contracts, so Darren, that's the way I'm looking at that. Now, would you feel, I mean, you tell me, anybody that, is that unfair? If you sign the contract, aren't you taking care of yourself? Would you feel like, I mean, if I was signing the contract?
Comment on that, so I think, and I've heard, there's been some discussion about that. We, we in this community, speaking for myself, live somewhat of a sheltered life, I believe. We're very trusting. Unfortunately, even in this day and age, too many of us sign contracts without reading them thoroughly or having an attorney review them. I don't know that that's a given, that just because you signed the contract, you're protected. I'm also of the mindset that if I sign the contract and I'm not protected, that's my fault, so.
How do we know our neighbor signs the contract and we're, we're not forward? How do we know?
Talk to your neighbors.
And when we don't, yeah, I've been doing that. But, you know, I liked the setback before. I have a wind turbine that's probably close to three thousand feet, maybe further. She said across the field, a mile.
Seven tenths of a mile, isn't it?
Seven tenths of a mile, okay. Seven tenths of a mile is where my closest wind turbines at, or not mine. And I get, I have all of those things that those people tell you, yet if I were people, I would not want it any closer than that. Because I have sound, I have shadows, I have all of it, and people need to know that part of it. Yes, there's a lot of advantages to wind turbines, that some people see, that's okay. But for me, being, having firsthand experience from it, I felt comfortable when the county commissioners set that setback, whatever years, whenever we did it before. I felt comfortable because it was protecting the people around and the people that didn't know. Because when I signed up for that contract, I was not as knowledgeable as I should have been. And we, in this area, we often don't talk to our neighbors. We're very private people, you know, we, it's our business, our farm is our business and we're private. And so we don't communicate enough with other people. So when people come in like this, we all sort of get snowed. And we, to an extent, was that also. So the only reason I'm here is that, you know, people need to be knowledgeable. But the setback, I think, is, is a huge thing, it needs to be, it just needs to be.
And there's two people involved in all these contracts, but most of them anyway, husband and wife usually. And, you know, and I can understand, I think back of, I can use my mom and dad for example. If somebody come in, sat down at our kitchen table and offered us five or ten thousand dollars for something on our farm. Mom would have been thinking, ah, a new kitchen, or whatever. I mean, you know, they would have things going for her, now, right or wrong.
Right.
But you're in what I call a cash starved community. Because most farmers are really cash starved, they don't have a lot of excess cash. Now, granted, seven dollar corn has helped solve some of that problem, but at the same time, now it's backed down and it ain't working quite as well. So, but it's, you know, that, that is another point that I have problems with, you know, when they go in and I, you know, I feel like they. You know, we talk about neighbors against neighbors, I talk about husbands against wives. You know, because I feel there's a little of that goes on in this situation, you know, and, and right or wrong, it's. And hopefully, it's not as serious as it, as it seems to me, but.
I got one more.
I have one too.
The, you were involved in the one of us, and I don't want to point you out, but you were involved in the one of us about the back in the day. They didn't want you talking to your neighbors.
No.
Because they didn't give each person the same thing for say.
Because I didn't.
That was kind of a negotiated process. What's it like in this farm? Oh, we having issues with toward the end here, is somebody getting more than what, say, the ones that signed up earlier? Or can you speak to that for say? I mean, what I'm getting at is, if you do give more to the people that signed at the end because, boy, we need that piece of ground. And now they're going to sign because you're going to give them, say, five times more, I don't know what it would be, but just.
Are you, are you negotiating these contracts on a per acre basis? Let's say Tim has two thousand acres. Are you negotiating these contracts and saying, okay, Tim, you've got two thousand acres in our footprint? And we're willing to pay you fifteen, twenty dollars an acre forever, for that twenty acres? Well, then, down the road, if we ever put a light, if we ever put a windmill on there, then it's going to bump up to whatever the payment is for a windmill. Or are you already got positions for windmills in this footprint? Did I make that straight now?
No. I'm confused with what you just.
Well, there's been a lot of questions, okay? And, and some of them are, is everybody getting treated the same?
Absolutely.
I mean, when you go there, it's, this is what we got, we're not going to say, and now toward the end, say, you need another five thousand acres. Are you going to go out and give them more so you grab that five thousand acres?
I can guarantee that that's not the case, but we absolutely do not want to.
But toward the end, it's a pot, I mean, to me, if that happens, okay, now this is just me. You need to go back and negotiate with all, hey, everybody's going to get, that just makes it everybody not fighting amongst themselves. But say, the project is something that, okay, we do have a company here that's worried about making it a fair playing field for everybody. You see what I'm getting at?
So our, yeah, we have one form for the project.
Now, what?
Now, on the, for the option payment, that is based on, you know, acre size, but for the actual piece, that is, right. Right, but no, there's not, no, we're not going around negotiating, right, right. We have a form. And our, and our policy is, we actually, we encourage neighbors to talk to other people, I mean, that's.
Okay, because see up there, they didn't want you to talk.
We do the opposite.
I have a question on that topic, because Tim commented on a little bit, a little bit ago about not wanting neighbors to talk to each other. So you said you want neighbors to talk to each other, but yet, and I'm, and I've read both, both energy companies' contracts fairly well. But there are places in the contract where you make it very clear, I don't, it's a confidentiality clause or whatever that is. That doesn't sound to me like you want people talking to each other because essentially, you're making it crystal clear that you cannot legally send, talk to each other. So that seems to me a little bit contradictory.
There is two different companies, so one's Invenergy and one's.
Yes, yes.
It does include that, but I can guarantee you, as a, as a land agent that has talked to a lot of your, your neighbors. Any of the ones that I've talked to, I've encouraged them to talk to their neighbors and ask them.
Why does it include that?
Big question for Spencer.
Spencer, what is it?
I mean, that's like, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I can just, I mean, I'm not. I mean, no, but really, I mean, the form comes down from our legal department and that's just what we're presented with.
As an attorney, that's what I should.
Around, around here, that's what some refer to as kind of passing the buck.
But I'm just, I'm being completely honest with you, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not an attorney, so, I mean, I can't.
That's probably part of their language for say, you know, okay.
So you know where the windmill is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care that it, that it is, all I care about is what it means to me if I sign the contract or if my neighbor signed the contract and then.
But do you see what I'm getting at?
Uh, yeah, yes, I do.
If somebody gets twenty dollars an acre and I got three, I'm pissed.
Well, yeah, but there, honestly, there are things that would upset me even more is, is that if my neighbor signed and, and he gets treated like dog shit and can't even legally tell me about it.
Um, okay, without for say, a lawsuit for say, or, because that is in there, I understand what you're saying.
There's a lot of things, and the more I.
Yeah.
Process this, the more.
This would be what was, would be considered hearsay evidence, but I've had two customers that I, I don't think have ever lied to me before that. Have, have both said that they've sweetened the deal a lot of recent. Now, whether they're dealing with Next Era or Invenergy or who they're talking to, that, that has been said to me both. And one of them was Sunday morning at the pancake breakfast, Tim, so.
Yep, and I can guarantee you that is not us, that's so the original.
And I don't, and I don't know that it is, they didn't say what company, they just said it.
Now, that brings up another point. Would that indirectly influence, because, okay, Invenergy's going out there doing that, but now you need those acres, so you're going to go get them from Invenergy?
And where are they at in this whole deal? Why are they so aggressively out trying to lease ground if the only agreement that our commissioners have established is with Next Era?
Which they have the right to. You know, they can still lease it up.
Can Invenergy lease land in your footprint or?
I mean, if they wanted to, yeah, absolutely. There's nothing, I mean, that's up to the landowner, whatever the landlord wants to.
Okay, so they could, but if they would have to take their power, pipe it away to their, they're going to run it through you guys?
They're not going to put tires in there.
They couldn't.
But they in turn, though, could give it back, for say, the leases back somehow another two next era if you need them.
They could, but I would say right now, we don't, we don't. I mean, we are wrapping up our acquisitions, we're not.
You go back to when the oil thing was back in the sixties and seventies down around golf. We had a lot of oil wells in places. And a lot of people, there was five, six different companies coming around buying your, buying your oil rights. Well, if you happened to sold your oil rights to the wrong person, they had no intention of ever building a oil well on your property. The company next door would put an oil well right on the fence and angle it, or no, I don't know what they did. But they would, they would suck out of your pool of oil and you'd get nothing and they'd get it all. And, you know, and that's something that leads up to this, you know, I mean, there's people that remember that very well. And, and it can happen and, you know, the, but that did. I can take you and show you a different, a lot of different places where there's oil wells within three hundred feet of fence. One company was one, one wasn't, yes.
This is sort of on an emotional side, but the people that are signing up, they need to think about, because I didn't, like, ten, fifteen years down the road. You know, we sold off some of our land and our kids wanted to build, build on that place. But right now, what they bought, that, after they'd been there back home and around, we can't build the house there, mom. We can't stand those wind turbines. So I want to, just make sure everybody knows the whole big picture, because it's not just today, it's ten years down the road, it's twenty years down the road. And just make a, just make a right decision for you and your.
That's the reason I was asking, if they had a study of what it does to the appraisal value of homes. And what I've found, and the game has been very good, but two miles, two and a half miles. Is the only, it's got to be that far away from your house before it affects.
Dennis, on that note, London, Phil's house is about thirty-five hundred feet from the closest and about four thousand feet from the second closest of their two turbines. And they are the resident in Niemaha County that lives closest to wind turbines, as near as I know.
Yeah.
But that's.
And has wind turbines of their own, so.
Yeah, and if I had to do it again, yes, the money helps.
And then I'll talk to some people, though, that's from the areas, even Marysville and even up there. They said, I don't even pay any attention to them anymore. I mean, so it is the flavor of the day, I mean, some people are for them and some are against them, and so.
Some are more sensitive to the.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent, and, but that's going to be life. We are going to have some things in life that are not going to be quite the way we wanted them. And so in the end, we're going to work whatever we need to do to do the best for Niemaha County, that's our goal. If it's building them or if it's, you know.
Be careful what you wish for.
Tim?
We, I thought they were cool thirty years ago.
With, with regard to our exchange before on whether a, a participating landowner signs a, a contract. He's essentially protecting himself, looking out for himself. I'm not very good with this stuff, but Next Era's thoughtful attorneys ought to put a setback waiver in here. That says owner hereby waives enforcement of any applicable setback and side yard requirements. So they have it right in the contract that they just waive their setback guidelines.
So they've already got a waiver in place on the people that they've gotten to sign contracts? So even if the county does do something, the people that have signed are not protecting themselves.
Did I interpret that correctly?
Well, but even our setbacks before, you could put one five hundred feet from your house. Just because we had a setback in place, we put language in there and said, if you want it closer, you can have it closer.
But these, these contracts are waiving that, any setback requirement automatically.
For participating.
So the setbacks that they had established only protected nonparti, nonparticipating landowners. If you signed the contract, you automatically waived whatever the county had in place, even though it's not there anymore.
Yeah, our resolution gave people the option of waiving that, so that those who wanted to have a windmill.
They could.
With the setback requirements, could.
Back to zoning, for what it's worth, I lived in Oklahoma City for ten years of my life that obviously had zoning. I know there's a lot of opposition to it, I didn't like dealing with it, it kind of sucked. like dealing with it, it kinda sucked, but I will tell you, it was a $25 fee to file for a permit to do something, I, I built one home, I added on to one home, and I remodeled another home when I lived in Oklahoma City. All I ever had to do was go file a permit, I never had to hire an engineer to do anything, I never had to have, the addition I did was a napkin sketch drawing, and I filed the permit, they gave me the permit, I called for the inspections, you paid for the inspections, it added $125 to doing the project. Um, the only issue I ever had is I had something I'd wired up one time that the electrical inspector didn't like the way I did it, I had to redo it, and I know there's a lot of oppositions to it, I just built a shed a year or two ago, I really liked the fact that I could just go out and build the dang thing and didn't have to talk to anybody, but it was a shed, and it wasn't 480 foot tall, is that what?
Yeah.
It, it wasn't gonna shadow my neighbor, it wasn't gonna affect anybody around me, and so I, part of me thinks that if we need to have zoning to establish some setbacks, something that the people of the county ought to consider. And like I said, I'm, I'm a huge believer, part of the reason I live where I do is so that I can walk out as, as our friends from the city, and when they come out and visit, they, you know, first, are you gonna develop this? No, I'm not, because I wanna walk out of my back door from my bedroom, stand out on my deck and take a piss, and I have to worry about offending anybody. And, so I'm very much a landowners' rights person, but at the same time, I also appreciate my neighbors, Dwayne's one of them, I, I think the world of my neighbors, and so, I don't wanna be in a position of doing anything to affect them, and, but at the same time, sometimes I do things without thinking. I've got a friend that had a neighbor that did something without thinking a while back, there was no ill intention, he just hadn't thought about the effects of that. If you have something in place for zoning, it goes, you know, you file your permit, it goes to a planning commission, and they look at it, and they might say, oh, well, you know what, if he does this, that's right in front of so-and-so's house, maybe we should talk to them. And that might cause that landowner to give a second thought and say, hey, you know what? That's right, maybe I shouldn't put that grain bin right in front of this guy's house, or at the very least, turn the fan to the other direction, you know? That sort of thing is, is something that can be helped, because we all do things without thinking sometimes, I've done it many a time, and I think there's a lot of things that we really need to think through as a community, and, and I think the biggest thing, my request to the commissioners is, the things that are going on here, get it in the paper, get it on the radio, get it on the front page of the paper, you know, we've got on the front page of the paper that Washburn University is buying all this wonderful power, and that's all fine and good, but I can tell you something, that if they were putting this wind turbine project on the Flint Hills and the Conza Prairie, the people at Washburn University would be losing their minds, they'd be protesting in the street, and there'd be a flyer on every window in, in the community.
They wouldn't put it on the prairie.
Exactly.
That's why they're moving, that's why.
And, and, and all that's gonna affect there is a few prairie chickens. So we gotta think these things through, and inform the public so we know what's going on. If, if the rescinding that 2012 resolution had been publicized better, and I understand, you probably did the legal publication that you have to do, that nobody reads, I don't read them, if that had been on the front page of the paper that that was happening, you'd have had people in this, in this room. If it had been publicized for, for multiple paper runs, people would have been here. You've got a lot of people in here that have.
I disagree, and I agree with you on that.
You've got a lot of people in here that have taken their time away from their farms or jobs and so forth today to be here, and that's what, most people that you talk to have no idea what's going on. So, that's my thoughts and experience.
And for that, you might wanna talk to the deals. We can't control what goes in the front page.
I mean, tax credits per tower?
Yes, how is, is Next Era getting per tower, how many tax credits?
I mean, that's proprietary information, I'm, just to be honest, I mean, I'm not gonna, I mean, you understand there's, there's certain things that, you know.
I'm sure you're getting, blame one, let me repay for the towers.
I would disagree with that.
He, he asks can you, not will you?
Oh, can I?
Yeah.
I can't, I mean, like, am I allowed to, or I don't understand, I guess I don't understand the question.
If you're willing to share it, that's all I said.
I mean, again, that's proprietary information about our business model.
Pretty much, you make a lot of money off this.
So, so is that, is that a no, presumably?
Yes, it's a no.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Wanna first off thank you all for coming this morning, this afternoon, appreciate your input, very supporting that Tim and I both, and I'm sure if Eric P was here, you know, of your interest, and we hope, we don't deter any of you from giving us a call anytime.
I commend everybody for being rational.
Yes.
Because we don't get anywhere if we get all disgusted and start.
Dennis, would you give a really tiny little report from our committee meeting Friday? Or one of us should, at least, probably.
You can go ahead.
Okay, so the commissioners have formed a pilot agreement, I don't know what you wanna call it, just information committee, not, not really advisory, might be a little stretched, so there's two landowners, nonparticipating, two participating, and all three superintendents from the 380, 115, and 113 districts on there, and Dennis sat in on it too, so, we just went through all the Kansas pilot agreements that we could find that the commissioners wanted us to go through, looked at the provisions, the, the dollars, of course, and other things, structure, and all that, so we're in the process of trying to put together some advice for you guys, for, so you can negotiate the best deal, so, for the, for the county. That's the report.
And I wanna thank, you know, the guys on the committee for helping us, 'cause we realized out of the chute that we was kinda overwhelmed, you know, and, and really, I don't think it should be up to just us three to make all these decisions for everybody that owns land in Niemhaug County. You know, if, landowners should have some input into it, and again, I think things look different on each side of the table, so, but we do appreciate everybody's input and help, and, and hopefully, everything will work out. I don't know, our next deal is we're gonna work on the pilot agreement, is this, Spencer, what's your?
All three agreements.
All three agreements, yes. All three agreements, and we'll go with that, and, and the road agreements, and then we'll probably have to decide on an engineering firm, and what we need to do there.
That would, around the same time of the negotiation of the road and maintenance agreement?
Probably need to do some research, talk to other counties, get some references to see who's been satisfied and who hasn't.
And for, just to, for everyone in the room, too, our teams, when I say the micro sighting, like I discussed before in January, there's gonna be different folks from our side who are gonna be going on our participating landowners' property, so if you see some people, some, you know, trucks driving around, that's us, I didn't wanna surprise anybody.
In other words, don't shoot.
I love that, too, yeah.
Yeah, please don't lay up next to me.
Hair, 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 I just said, we were all really nice.
Knowing you guys were from Texas, I decided I'd say that, I wouldn't have.
Anyway, we're at any mark, so people do know.
Yeah, yeah, well, some different engineering teams, and you're doing some work, so if you see them.
Well, we can laugh about it, but you know what, that's not as funny as it sounds.
He's from Kansas, he's from Texas.
Oh, he is, okay.
You know what I mean?
I said, just a question, what's the, when you all get these contracts put together and do all this kinda stuff, what's the drop dead date before you make your decision as commissioners?
February 34th, correct?
We're always looking at February 28th, is that what that was, so you wanna know the dates in place?
February 28th, execute agreements, and I would say we're probably.
Around that February 28th timeframe.
So will there be an hearing that all these guys can come weigh in on?
Uh, sure. I mean, I would want some input.
Well, I'm, I'm just.
Of course.
I'm just trying to get.
And there's probably gonna be some layers to it, I mean, why not?
Yeah.
Maybe a month, three weeks from now, I don't know, we, maybe we'll have more information, and we can throw it out there, and, and it just kinda stair steps its way down till you get to that final decision. That's a good point.
It just seems to me like they need, all these folks that are sitting in here need some, uh, chance to read it three or four times and decipher and say.
It's a whole lot more than just the folks in this room.
What's good for the county, what's good for the, you know, good for the goose.
To dovetail into that, can, can we figure out a better system, maybe, to keep anyone who's interested updated as to when, what's going on and when, so we don't barrage Mary Kay's office with.
I guess if we got a preliminary agreement, for say, just something that we wanted to look at, is there a problem with that, putting it on our website?
Probably, I would.
As long as everybody knows it's preliminary.
Boy, I. I don't think, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I mean, I don't.
Or you get down toward that version where we're looking, okay, maybe this is okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't look for this to be something that's gonna be negotiated with the public, where, well, we're thinking of maybe $3,000, what does the public think of that? Well, we'll offer three now, so, so I think it's gonna be something that'll be handled fairly internally, but I think by the time, I think before we actually adopt the agreement, certainly that should be.
And people can look at it and say, you know, and they can express their feelings one way or the other, but I kinda feel like Brad, we need to come to an agreement and then say, here's what it's gonna be, and, you know, 'cause we won't have signed it yet, but, uh, that, that's my feeling, hard to.
Well, according, according to my wife, who understands this stuff, she said, it, there's no requirement by law for you guys to publish any of it, but there, there is a requirement for you to disclose it if it's requested, so, as long as somebody requests it, you can get it.
And I would say that if you'd all give Mary Kay your email, you know, we can, she can put that on a blog, and, and send you all an email on it, of what we're doing and how we're getting along with it, and that, I mean, but.
Just two different things, isn't it? One, one is, you've already signed contracts with some, some of the farmers, some of the landowners, is that right?
Yes.
So, you got the county issue, and whatever that means, I don't know what that means, Brad, I'd have to sit down a little while and talk to Brad about it, but I don't know. But it seems to me like you've got two issues, you've got, if the county doesn't sign, what happens to the farmers that have already signed all their contracts?
I'm sure if the, if the project doesn't take place, because.
Because what the county.
And the county takes some actions, but probably through zoning regulations, we need to gun zone to stop the project, then those who have signed agreements.
Okay.
Get nothing.
They're probably still gonna continue to get their land lease payments, I wouldn't make, 'cause that lease agreement was.
I'm sure there's, I'm guessing there's contingencies, that if the project does not go forward, that, that, that would be my guess, if I was drafting up these lease agreements, there would be a contingency clause that if the project does not take place, and there is no wind turbine placed on their land, that they don't get the full value of it.
Is there?
There are option agreements, so these are option payments.
So I have one question, if I go back to my runway situation, we provided you with that letter there, and it's, it's not to, you know, it's not meant to be a threat or anything like that, we, we, we agree with you from the standpoint of, you know, landowners will be able to do what they want with their ground, I, I understand all that, and I just wanna point out, my business already is affected, even before, you know, when the towers go up, from, from one aspect, there'll be some things that we can't do anymore, and, and that's up to the grower, that's fine, I mean, if anybody wants a preview of what it's like in between all these at 150 miles an hour, I'll take you, so, it's not fun. But with all that being said, so I already have that portion where we're already gonna be down income on that piece, but the runway is, is another, a whole different part of our business, it's the, for our whole operation, and my question is, so, whenever they spring this out, the final map, what if we can't come to an agreement, and so what is my recourse then? You said something earlier about, you know, you need to sign if you want protection, I'm not signing anything with these people on any of my ground, so I'm, I'm just left out in the cold, or do I need to bring suit against the county, or what do I gotta do, because I have a huge investment that I need to protect?
Yeah, your recourse is likely to be through, I mean, I would encourage you to talk to your attorneys about this, but would likely be you filing suit against the company, that's what's been done in the past, at least.
I would hope we can get it worked out without going that far, but we don't know that right until.
Right, I, I don't think it needs to get there, I'm just saying, what, what is my recourse?
Yes, I understand.
I mean, I mean, there are nuisance lawsuits out there, my sister was part of one up in Wisconsin, she and her husband owned a dairy farm, and it was gonna impact what they were doing with some development, and so they joined with other landowners and filed suit against the company, so if you go online, there.
Was that a wind company?
Yes.
Okay.
My concerns are real, there's already been comments to neighbors and other farmers about how they've been going on the end of my runway, and there's nothing I can do about it, it's coming from your people, so, if you wanna see my hesitation, that's what it is.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, first of all, second, I just received that letter on Friday, and again, I wanna come to you with all the information, you know, I have available, just 'cause I don't wanna come and not have a full picture from our end before I come and start speaking to you, so, but.
I think you guys need to talk.
Right.
If you can, don't you? I mean, that's me, and then if you don't like what you're hearing, I wanna know it. 'Cause we gotta make out a pilot agreement, too, and we're gonna take care of the businesses that are already here, in my opinion.
Fair enough.
I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, but, and I've never spoken with Glenn personally on this topic, but it seems to me you, you questioned this, or initiated dialogue, and you said you heard no response, I don't know how, what kinda timeframe.
We've had several conversations, they've wanted submitted what we thought was, was safe, so we've submitted what was safe two, two months ago, I don't know, something like that, not having everything bad.
So, as, as a prospective non-participant, as someone who is, hasn't completely ruled out signing with either company, I'm, I have to ask myself, is this a look, a glimpse around the corner as to what it looks for me? I don't operate at the same level Glenn does, and, and at this point, understanding things correctly, you haven't gotten anywhere, and I think, gee whiz, this doesn't bode well for somebody like me. You guys understand where I'm coming from?
I do, and if you look on the map, there is, even though it's not nearly what you are asking for, there is some setback from your strip, and that is before any negotiation has happened at all, or any conversation, really, about where our turbines will be placed.
How many turbines, potential, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, just, just in your perspective, when you ask about that, that's why, so, even before a conversation was had, we included a setback, and then the conversations will be had, once we know, you know, what our final design looks like.
Just out of curiosity, how many potential targets would, would that affect to, to, to satisfy Glenn from his perspective when he's there?
I don't know yet, and that's the reason why we haven't had the conversation. That's, and that's the truth.
Well, it's gonna cause Glenn problems, and he's gonna have to fly helicopters, or more helicopters, because he can't fly unless you guys wanna ride with him, you know, if you wanna ride with him, he'd probably take you out and take you through a few of them.
Anybody's welcome.
But, but, you know, he's gonna have to make an investment, but the thing I was getting to earlier, you know, you've got a company that's already got 41 employees, you know, you're gonna say 20 to 25 employees, why would we give up 41 because we're, you know, we wanna go, we don't wanna lose Glenn to some other county, we don't wanna lose Glenn, period, so, you know, we, we believe in.
Same perspective for you, you make a good point, though, for just the average landowner, you're a smaller scale, but you're still there. Just what you say, I mean, if you're nonparticipating, you still feel, you know, I guess you, good conversation.
Well, and, and that's why it's to their advantage to enter into some of these nonparticipating agreements, because that way they don't have these nuisance lawsuits being threatened or filed or anything like that.
When, when Tim told me that my best, my best option to protect myself was to sign a lease agreement.
I told you that?
You said, said, well, if you sign a lease agreement, you, you'll be able to establish a setback from your home.
Well, I said, if, you said, I didn't say your best option, I don't tell nobody that.
So, okay, so that, so to protect myself, I need to sign a lea- lease.
I think I heard you right now.
Wait a second.
Anyway, I am not for, against, in between, I'm sitting right here, and I wanna do the best for Niemhaug County, so I hope we do what's best for Niemhaug County. Yeah. Yeah.
You know, and, and the same goes, you know, we've got a lot of people that are pushing hard for this, guys.
Of course.
You know, I know we've got a handful here.
And some of those know what they're talking about. They've had these things dissected by attorneys, they know what's inside of those, so, you know, there's a lot of them maybe that just signed them to be signing them. I'm not gonna say they did or they didn't, but.
There's a lot of them confused and most of it's over money. You know, they're not, they're not decided, you know, whether they're gonna be paid by acre or by windmill or if they leased their land, are they gonna get a windmill? You know, I think a lot of them waiting on that specific information.
I talked to a guy the other day that said he's a hundred percent against them, that if they'd guaranteed the windmill, he'd sign it.
Yeah, yeah, not a great reason probably, but whatever.
Well, and I get people that tell me that says, well, the only thing that I care about is, if my taxes go down, it's great. So whether it's a windmill or whatever, but he says, I want my taxes to go down. So, and we can figure that one out. And, you know, and that's not gonna happen real easy. That's not an easy challenge for us. You know, with the, the budget constraints that's been put on us, uh, it's, it's a whole different ballgame. It really is. The last three, four years have really changed the way we operate, what we can do and the control we have because of the state of Kansas. And I don't know whether it's the state of Kansas or federal or who that offered this tax-free-for-life.
State.
You know, to me, that's, I wish they had it just like the pipeline. You know, you come in, put your deals up and pay taxes and it's done. Our taxes are split up the way they ought to be, everything is done. Now granted, the townships that's got the windmills are gonna get more than the other ones and, and things like that, but, you know, that's the other thing, when we get back to his point on the schools, you know, if, do we separate out by percentage of schools or, you know, that's why they say we should be in charge of that. Well, we'll have to discuss that in charge of, and.
Anyone that has input on that can ensure.
It is true that you do have wind farms in states that do have property tax, not that you have turbines on the tax rolls.
Right, that's correct, yeah.
So it works there.
And there are projects in Kansas that are, yes.
It works there.
And at the same time, there's also other counties where we have done the contribution agreement that works there too. But again, every county is unique and I recognize that.
Okay.
No, but I got a meeting at one o'clock.
I didn't expect this was gonna be a.
Tim, give me for me.
Neighbor, how are you?
Higher than me.
Yeah, yeah. Went over your lunch pail, so. Take your, take your, take your nap a little.